Okay, I'd like to call the meeting in order for February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Start with a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, verity, and justice for all.
Excuse me, I'll silence this.
Okay, um, it's not Warren bills.
Yep.
You guys all signed up? You uh, send the bills?
They're signed.
Good, okay, approval of the agenda.
Um, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to add an annual report update under old business.
Go be under old business.
Okay.
Then move to approve as amended.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Okay, minutes of the last meeting?
Um, I move to approve the minutes of the January thirty-first and the February seventh meetings.
Do I get a second?
A second.
All in favor? The town administrator, weekly update?
No update this week.
Okay, we're gonna go, continue on. Department head, community chair updates? No? Okay, Leslie?
Oh, but, no.
Good?
We're out, we're on the agenda, so.
Okay, okay. Okay, we're gonna go down to liaison updates, Tom?
Um, Warren Finance Committee had a meeting the other night, I attended a portion of that. Um, and municipal management have been fairly active in working with the treasurer and town administrator on budget development work.
Beautiful, Dan?
Um, I attended the school committee meeting and budgetary meeting last Thursday.
Mary Grant, I, I did an interview for you today.
Yeah.
We uh, I'm gonna jump in on the Mary Grant, cause I had to. Um, we have a new member that we'll be looking to put forward tonight. Roads and Rec, I have no update. So, okay, we're gonna go down to our eight, uh, executive session.
I move that we go into executive session four, five, six, eight, one, personnel at six eleven P M.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, see you in a little bit. Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move, I move that we come out of executive session four oh five, six A one, personnel at seven P M.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, no decisions. Okay, where are we here?
Old business.
Old business, twenty-four, twenty-five, budget car.
Okay, so we have done some additional work to the budget. We have, um, I think the only change that the board needs to know about is that we inadvertently left Goat Hill out. We, last couple of years have allocated five hundred dollars for them, so I've asked the treasurer to put that in. Um, we also made a change to the line that we were paying our website support to.
Yep, computer.
So which lines, what did that change, go to?
It's, is it on the sheet, no?
This one I just printed, so.
Yep, it was at six thousand, and we just put it up to sixteen, seven thirty-eight, I think is the number. Real quick.
There isn't agreed upon stipend for that work? And it's ten thousand dollars, as I understand?
Correct.
So, um, is there something else in that line beyond the stipend?
Six thousand dollars, it's for the, um, website, the ten hours of website work we do.
Oh, okay, we do, yeah.
So there's ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars, that's for the website.
Stipend?
Stipend, and then there's six thousand dollars in there for general maintenance and repair, computer repair.
Okay, computer repairs, okay, great.
That number's increased?
That, so that number increased.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that said, and then the other thing, um, for Tom's recommendation, uh, that we did is we made sure that the previous budget had all of the expenditures. So whether the townspeople approved it at a special time meeting, or it was a special road project, or whatever it was, the F Y twenty-three, twenty-four budget didn't have everything in it that was approved during the entire time. So, um, the treasurer went through and added all of those special projects because they should've been part of last year's or the current budget because they were approved by the voters. So with that being said, when all is said and done, um, we are actually, um, at about a, almost a one point five percent decrease in the budget now. We're actually comparing actuals from last year to this year.
Let me give an example of this, cause I, I'm not sure everyone will understand what we're doing there, cause it, it's a little tricky. For instance, this year, uh, we're carrying a, um, an increase in the finance director's position of, how much, seventy-five?
Yep.
Seventy-five. What we didn't have in the two thousand twenty-four budget was the fact that we had an approved sixty-five thousand dollars for the engagement of Mark Roy's firm. So, it was showing an increase of seventy-five thousand dollars. There was actually an increase of ten thousand dollars attributed to that. And I think what happened was, because that was funded from undesignated reserves, what was really left out of the two thousand twenty-four budget, for comparison purposes, of growth from twenty-four to twenty-five, was monies that were appropriated from various reserves. And in fact, those are expenditures, and it should be in the expense budget. So when you go to compare the change in budget year over year, this should be included in the base from twenty-four, and that's what's moved us from, you know, a significant increase in the budget to actually having a decrease in the total expenditures for the town. Make sense? Okay. Hmm, alright.
Okay, so, um, with that being said, we received some questions from the Warren and Finance. We're just gonna briefly go through those. Um, I did reply to the email. Questions one and two were both regarding the zoning, um, and I encourage the Warren and Finance to go to the public hearing tomorrow night.
I see the, um, Jason.
Oh, on the, yeah, but he doesn't, the planning board has moved them forward, so you know from your experience that only the planning board really don't want him presenting those to them. We'd like to see you, some of you guys there, and present them to the planning board and see if you can share your concerns or thoughts. Um, Article three regarding the foreclosure, um, as I mentioned in the email, um, we were hoping the ordinance is we're gonna keep you busy a little longer, we didn't realize you were gonna go through all of them. We know that one's got some incorrect, um, references in it, the treasurer's working on that, and I did get your latest email with a correction, so thank you, we'll make sure that's corrected. Um, Article three, you're looking for the balances on all the accounts, including the informational. Um, as you know, this came in Tuesday, we worked with Mark Roy today, we'll have all those numbers to you by next week. Article, uh, five on the rates, um, we will send that over to you, but we wanted to make public mention that, um, when the board approved the three point two five percent hourly rate increase for staff across the board, the road commissioner will also be receiving that. All of the other ones did stay a hundred percent the same as last year. Uh, the next one was the article on stockpile. Um, this one, um, I spoke to, Ed is out tonight for personal reasons, but I spoke to David and also Will. So the last couple of years, there has been about a ten thousand dollar surplus. Uh, Will is really uncomfortable changing this. Um, he feels like this was probably the last year we got the price that we were gonna get on the salt for some reasons that we really can't disclose based on some things he's run into, um, and based on main weather. So he really doesn't wanna lower that, but certainly look to the board's input on that one.
No, I mean, we've, we've.
Stockpile.
Yeah, we've messed with that before, and it's, it's really bit us in the tail end. Uh, I don't believe that's the line that we wanna, we wanna bother with.
That's good with that?
I, I, yeah, look, it's weather related, what are you gonna do? Uh, look at the farmer's almanac and, and judge whether or not you're gonna have a, a better or worse snow, you know, a snow year? I, I don't know, it's ten thousand dollars in a, in an overall budget of five million, I'm not particularly worried about it.
Three, three loads of salt.
Yeah.
But, at the end of the day, the department head should be seeing that number and ordering a salt getting spent before the end of the year, that's what I would be doing, you know?
He did make mention that he would probably be.
Yeah, and so, I, I think that by lowering that number, probably it'd be, it wouldn't be productive.
It, it, um, question, if, if there is surplus money there, can that be spent for other purposes?
Uh, depends on how the article was written, do you have?
But in the past, it could not, right? The way it was written?
It would be written the same way, cause we haven't changed it yet. Um, I'd have to read.
So if it's written, I believe in the past, if, if that line was over.
Stockpile, supposed to be stockpile.
Stockpile only, so my point is, we don't spend it, it's going to the bottom line, it's not like we're gonna shift it.
Winter maintenance and sand and salt.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, you, was it last year?
Last year was the first year we changed it to.
Oh, we did change it last year.
We added sand and salt to give the winter maintenance a little more.
Yes.
Higher percentage, fifteen percent should we go over.
But the point is, it, it's all for winter.
Yes.
Winter maintenance and.
The stockpile does say an exact number, right?
Yes.
So it has, it has a specific number to stockpile, so I think it has to be spent.
Let me, let me put it this way, if we have a better winter.
No.
And we have savings, the money's going to the bottom line.
Yeah.
So, I, you know, it's not like we're gonna take it and shift it over to the summer maintenance.
It's three hundred and forty-nine thousand for winter period.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not, you know?
Alright, so, uh, the next one was the article on the public works building grounds. Um, they recalled that some electrical work was being done for this section. If so, why are we carrying the amount over? Will has done the, or had the work done, the electrician came in, did all that major work. Um, I spoke to him about it today, he wasn't able to be here. But additionally said that there was some work that the previous road commissioner was supposed to do on the building that hasn't been done yet, some repair to the door, some column, um, cylinders or columnars inside that were starting to rust.
Oh, that, and the old shed?
Yes, so he asked that the lines stay the same and says there's maintenance that needs to be done in the building. The board absolutely insists, you know, he could probably use a couple, take a couple thousand dollars off, but he prefers you don't.
Has he identified what the maintenance requirements are?
He has, um, he has a list, he hasn't gotten prices and tallied it, he's just trying to play catch-up on some of that. It's, I think the first year that he's really taking that over, correct?
Hmm.
Yeah, because Adam used to take care of that part of it.
Mentioned some door repairs and some of this.
Well, I mean, if he thinks he can cough up some money, I think that would be great.
Okay.
And so I wouldn't just leave it, cause it's there, I would.
What is the number now?
Um, I think it's, well, ten thousand, I think was the amount in the line that.
I think it usually ran that.
How much is?
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand.
So, my question, one question I do have is, back in the day, we used to use that line, we used to buy our cut edges out of that line, are they still doing that?
Separate.
Is it, is that separate line, okay, good. Good.
So let's ask him what he really needs, and let's take, this would be my recommendation, ask him what he really needs, I know he's got some bidding he's gotta do, and let's set the budget at that level, and if we can take some off, let's take it off. We've done that with everyone else, why not do it here?
Actually, he did say that, you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure Will'll do the right thing.
Yeah.
We, we okay with that?
No, I think that's fine.
If you, wanna come up here, Charlie?
Uh, no, it's not important.
Okay.
You know, Charlie, what we're trying to do is make sure that when we're having conversations, that people are at the podium, cause there, there are other conversations going on, and I don't know about others, it drives me crazy.
Camera people, you know, people on the other side don't know who's talking, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, I'll clear that up for next week and see if we can get a better description of what he's gonna spend that on, and see if there's any area to reduce it some.
Good.
Uh, the, uh, road project, um, very good point, thank you, the reference will be changed to forty-one oh one H Road, so we'll make that change. Uh, A P A T discrepancy, uh, that was a typo, so it's been corrected. And then town reports, uh, on agenda a little later on, uh, so I'll save the news for then.
Great.
Okay.
And then next, regarding the budget, um, Kelly's here to go over the warrant with you. You have, um, copy of the warrant as it's.
Oh, yes.
As it probably is exists.
Yes, yeah.
And, um, we met with Mark Roy today.
I don't have that, some of them.
Yeah. Go ahead, I, 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 I don't. Are we gonna share it? Hmm?
So while she's giving that, while she's giving that out, um, so obviously the first page, no changes to, second page, no changes to. Mark did, um, make the recommendation that the two articles, um, in regards to spending money from the unassigned fund balance and the surplus town items, they're currently listed at five hundred, he thinks that number should be much, should be higher, that he thinks that it's silly to go before committees in town for that low of amount. Um, I'm here just to pass along his thoughts, so he would like to see you consider that. Um, the next article.
So, so can we deal with that now?
Absolutely, what we'd like to say.
Let's, let's try to, so, um, which article is this?
Well, they're not numbered.
On top, right?
That's right, it's, uh, five hundred dollars.
There's two of them, so. So the first one is expenditures in excess of five hundred shall require the advice of the Warren Finance, and then the second one is to dispose of town equipment.
Well, so, it, um, the selectmen, um, would have to seek the advice of Warren and Finance for anything over five hundred dollars?
That's correct, if it comes out of the emergency fund, that's fifteen thousand.
Alright.
So what are we discussing?
I mean.
Do you wanna raise?
Raising that five hundred dollar number.
Okay.
Would anyone like, from the Warren and Finance Committee, like to sort of, um, have anything to say to support five hundred dollars as the appropriate number? Cause I would like to see it raised, personally. Uh, i- is this an important number for you folks, at five hundred?
I think the last time we.
Cause really, we're talking about, if we raise it, then that, that means that, uh, your involvement has been, uh, at, items below that threshold have been removed.
I, I think.
So before we act on that, what are your thoughts?
I, I think that number's low.
Okay, alright, terrific.
I, I wouldn't wanna see it up to five thousand dollars, but.
That's the number I had in my head.
I wouldn't, yeah.
You wanna, i- i- is anyone else from the Warren and Finance Committee wanna comment on this?
You fight, you've got, everyone's got like five thousand?
I'm just trying to move it along. Five thousand, you guys would be happy with, I, I think that's a fine number, how are we feeling about it? I'm fine with that, David?
That's a third of it, yeah.
There you go, alright, what's the other one we gotta talk about? Surplus property?
The, yeah, to dispose of anything, you can, currently can only dispose of it less than five hundred dollars.
What do you do above five hundred?
You're supposed to go up public bid for it.
Oh, oh.
Anything having a value of more than five hundred shall be put out of public bid.
So how do you determine the value without, without a bid? You don't know what the hell the value is?
What we've really gotten rid of, that comes close to that number.
We haven't? No, but if we had a vehicle, or, or, I don't know, what might it be? Um, we got a piece of equipment at the transfer station that we wanna sell. If it's over five hun, if it's over five hundred dollars, we gotta get a bid, a sealed bid.
Yeah, cause what happens, okay, you take the, uh, old town center that's sitting there, that hasn't been used in like, seven years, okay? Who puts the value on that? How do you put value on, the value comes from the bid.
That's my point, you can't, you can't do it. What's the, what's the purchasing policy value? Cause that's a, that's a, a value that requires us to go out and get a bid, is that five thousand?
Yes, one thousand to four ninety-nine is, um, pretty competitive.
I, I don't know, it seems to me there's some rationale for making them the same, but I don't know, you folks think?
Meaning that if, the disposal of, if it's five thousand, that's what we'd have to.
I guess the question is, let's say you got something, and you, oh, that's only worth four thousand dollars. If we raise it to five, then the selectmen could take action on its own without any kind of competitive process, so we're judging what the value is.
Yeah.
At four thousand.
And all you're doing is disposing of it, so I, I guess I'm struggling with how long.
Is it really disposing of it, or selling it?
No, to see the town vote.
Dispose of surplus town.
To dispose of surplus town owned, so this is a typewriter that has a value more than a certain amount, I mean.
Well, wait a minute now, by dispose, you mean junking it?
Dispose of surplus town owned equipment with the exception of road equipment, having a value of less than five hundred dollars.
I, I think that's an interpretation of the word dispose, maybe that's the way you've used it, but.
We've never used this article, Tom.
Uh, yeah.
We've never had to, it's never come into play that I can recall, you guys?
Was there any reason why it was recommended that that specific number, I could see the, the first one, but, we've never used this one, was there any reason why this is?
It's just, I think it's so old, it's been carried over so many times.
This isn't that old.
You don't think?
I mean, why that number was recommended to go up, like, why he thought it was so low? I could get the first one, seeing why that one would be considered low, but if.
I was real commissioned when they put this through, and they did it because it was, it was an issue with the, um, equipment down there, the town shed, and they were all worried that they were gonna sell it off, and they wanted to use that stuff in their trucks.
If you're selling it off, that's, that's where I was going, if you're disposing of it, which I'm hearing, seeing some nodding heads, that means you're, you're, uh, it's being, um, junked. You're, you're, you're putting it in the, in, in the, uh, at the recycling center. Why you would ever do that with anything of a value more than five hundred, to me, doesn't make any sense. I mean, if you can get five hundred dollars for it, you're gonna sell it. Now, should you have to go through a competitive bi, a bid process to do that? That's where I was going, that that ought to be the threshold, says, you know, if you think this is three thousand dollars, and if, in the select board's judgment, they think there's a reasonable value of getting a fair price, I would just leave it to the selectmen to do that, rather than getting a competitive bid, but that's, that's me. If it was five thousand, I'd say send it out, do a competitive bid.
Yeah, you can do the research pretty quick, and go around the line, and figure what this stuff is going for.
For, and if, if it's over five thousand dollars, you definitely wanna make it competitive. But otherwise, you know, it, it's.
This might be.
It's a management judgment, and that's the, to me, that's a role of a selectmen, the select board, to be able to do that.
End of the day, any town owned equipment.
Yeah.
Should be, uh, subject to be put out to bid.
Over five thousand, over five thousand.
Of the select board.
Yeah, or either.
It doesn't even matter what the value is.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, if we decide, we just went out the bid over here on the little fire department thing, we didn't get bids, but, I mean, we don't, nobody valued that at five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
You know, there was no bids, so at the end of the day, it should be at the discretion of the select.
What are you suggesting?
Well, I mean, any, if, if we're out to sell anything off.
Yeah.
That, you know, you don't have to have a five hundred dollar mark, because nobody knows that mark.
No.
So, you know, you could change that to, uh, all town owned equipment and property to be disposed of shall be put out to bid, um, and, uh, bids shall be accepted or, or denied at, uh, selectmen's, um.
I, I would say.
Discretion.
At the selectmen's discretion, it would be put out to bid or, or not, I'm saying that if, if.
Well, I'm just saying the end result, you get the bid, you don't have to, you know, somebody, you know, if we have something that we feel's worth five thousand bucks, well.
So, here's my.
If you bid for a hundred bucks, you know I'm thinking.
It seems like the, the valuation of it at the end, like, when we're thinking of disposing is what's in question. Is there anything that we could do to, say that anything that was put out to bid to purchase, which would be above that fi, five thousand threshold, automatically needs to be put out to bid, so if it costs, if we had to put it out to bid to purchase that, we should assume that there might be some evaluation that we should automatically just make that something out to bid.
If you're gonna sell something in a town of acting, it's no different than our properties and everything else, if you don't put it out to bid, it's always gonna look like somebody didn't do it.
A sweetheart deal.
Sweetheart deal, you have to put everything out to bid.
And I, and it really wasn't the original intent, I've gone back ten years, it's still on there, but this, it wasn't the intent, the original, the original intent of this article was that, according to legal, you couldn't get rid of all the metal chairs that we've had, you know, I mean, you can't dispose of anything, the board couldn't make a decision to get rid of a, a broken typewriter or something.
You could throw something out, but if you sell, it's different.
But that, that's why.
No, no, that's not what they're saying, dispose.
That's what this article is for, to dispose of, to give you the authority to get rid of all these metal chairs that I keep pushing around every meeting. Gives you the authority to get rid, that's what it was for.
Get rid of dispose of.
Huh?
Get rid of the word dispose of.
Well, we wanna be able to continue to dispose of these metal chairs, you know, if anybody wants them. And that's what, that's what it was intended for, to give you the authority to get rid of stuff if you found no use for it anymore.
Is this a common article at other towns?
Yeah, every year.
Yes.
It is?
Because according to legal, and that's just what they've taught us, that the board doesn't have the authority to dispose of town property, even broken, without this article.
Well, that settles the matter.
That's what.
Definition, definition, legal definition of dispose is to transfer the control or ownership of another.
Just a little include.
Yeah, it, but that's not what was being, that was not what people thought, who were actually implementing this, they thought dispose was being put in the trash.
Because it, it says in here, all equipment.
Wouldn't make sense in the rest of the paragraph.
I agree, I agree.
All equipment having a value of more than five hundred shall be put, put out to bid.
Why don't we just leave it in, as it is, let's just leave it and move on, we're spending more time on this than we should, and, uh, it's been there for more than ten years, let's, maybe next year we'll figure it out.
Okay, so the next one is the foreclosure one that Kelly is working on.
Yeah.
Um, the next one, the tax rate, um, the tax rate this year for interest, uh, for the state is eight point five percent. Um, it was not four percent last year.
This is delinquent taxes?
Yes, it was actually eight percent last year, it was just never increased in acting, so is your recommendation to go to the highest, the eight point five?
I, i- if, if, uh, does the, the state publishes this rate?
Yes.
Why not just make it a standard that we adopt the state rate, and not have to move it around every time the rate changes?
Is there any reason why we didn't?
Hmm?
Is there any reason why we didn't?
I, I'm not hearing any. I can't imagine, we just say that we'll adopt the rate established by the state.
Yeah, four percent, it's not even, you know, one of the old days.
Right, cause sometimes you forget about doing it, so, um.
Okay.
Any comment?
Because of the state rate is, we are.
Okay, well, okay.
Alright, I think that Kelly's gonna take over from here, on these next financial accounts.
Okay, so the handout I gave you, we're only looking at the very left side, it's just the categories listed on the left.
Sure, yeah.
Oh, it's right there.
And, what we're doing is trying to.
Hold on, does Dan have this?
Yes, it was with your warrant, but I just.
Well, I didn't get, I didn't get the warrant either, so.
I handed it to you about back there.
I got this, this was.
It's fine, do you need another one?
Probably, yeah, I probably took it out back with me.
Here, take mine, I've already looked at it.
I do a pretty good job keeping my documentation.
Is that it?
I have everything from my first meeting.
You got one? Now we got an extra.
Okay, we're good. I got the Greenville one. I don't think that's gonna help any. Okay, what are we looking at?
You need another copy?
No.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So we're just looking at the left, the left column, and the categories that are there. What we're doing is we're trying to consolidate some of the articles, so we don't have so many at town meeting. These are the recommendations from Mark Roy. This is his, um, budget to actual, and, as you can see, the revenue is actually on top. I'm not sure how, um, we would condense that, but, well, we're not.
I think the revenues, the revenues, we don't cite a number. We simply, uh, acknowledge that, uh, the revenues will be taken account, uh, when we set the tax rate.
Right, okay.
I believe that's all we're doing. So we're not gonna present numbers, because we won't know final numbers until July.
Right. So if we move on to general government, as you can see, if you look at the warrant and compare it to the, the handout that I gave you, they're adding a few categories in there, like, um, assessing, they're taking out the health and welfare and moving it to community services. So they're just condensing the warrants.
So would the warrant just reference the general government category in total at nine hundred and eighty-five thousand?
Right.
Not all this detail?
No, it would, no, no, it would have the detail. His recommendation is that it look just like that.
Yeah, with all that detail, okay.
This would be listed there.
But what they would be voting on is the nine eighty-five.
Total, total general government, uh, accounts size.
Or just say, on the top of the, of the warrant article, they would just say to raise and appropriate the nine, the nine eighty-five, six ninety-seven, and that would be the simplest.
Which, if you turn the page, that's how we're doing it now. The only difference that he wants to change is these categories to swap out for his categories.
Well, if, these are the categories that we are now reporting on for budget purposes.
Right.
So it makes sense to have the warrant aligned with those, so the warrant then can easily be, uh, entered into the budget system to reflect the, the categories we actually use for our management purposes. Right?
Yes, those are the accounts, that's how they're set up now?
Right. So then if you, if you move on down, you'll just see that instead of having fire department, animal control, and other public safety, each have their own warrant, it's gonna be combined under one. Um, if you could move down to public works, there's probably gonna be a, some changes here, because I believe the select board are gonna discuss if D one and D two for the roads and transfer station need to all be separated out in their individual warrants, but that's up to them.
So there'll be three categories here.
Right.
District one, district two, and transfer station.
Right. And then as you move down, you'll see that the rec department, APAT, and other, if we had any other recreation departments in the future, that would be there. And, um, community service would be our donations we make to the local charities, plus health and welfare that moved from municipal management.
Now, now when we list, um, other community services, we're gonna list all the detail.
Right, that would.
Take one vote on it. So it'll all be disclosed, but one vote.
Right.
Okay.
We're putting the library back in there?
Oh, good question.
Leslie, come right on up here, please.
So we had pulled out the library as a separate thing, so we're gonna be, put it back under community services?
I'm not seeing the library in here, is that your point?
It was, it is under other, on, on his presentation. You're correct, we took it out for the instruction last week after meeting with him today. He recommends that go back in.
Okay, I just wanted, because the number didn't add up, so that's why I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay.
Someone talking about the other communities.
All right. Okay.
And then on the last page, it's debt services, assessments, fixed costs, abatements, and bad debt.
Is the assessment and fixed costs, is that the county tax?
Yeah.
Why don't we just call it that?
Yep.
Yeah. That'd be a good idea.
No one will know what it is. And, uh, abatements and bad, oh, okay, we got a bad debt expense?
Right offline.
Just right offline, okay. This looks great, great to me. This is how, this aligns with the monthly reports you've been getting on budget to actual. So having the warrant aligned with that just makes so much sense.
So there are some other ones that I have that we skipped, that.
We did?
Yeah, so he, um, one of them, on the rollover, on these rollover accounts. So, with the pay, and the, I'm sorry, third page in, third page in, the bottom starts to carry forward, we needed to talk about some of these. One of them, um, the FEMA Emergency Disaster Reserve Fund, there was a lot of discussion, uh, with Mark Roy today on that one, and David was actually present. He's recommending, um, that you research, that we do some research on when the money was deposited in there, but really that we write an article to liquidate that account and move it to the general fund, because he believes that anytime FEMA has reimbursed us over the years, it really should have been used to pay for that disaster, and it looks like.
It belongs in an undesignated reserve?
Well, at this point, because if the road, if the road was fixed five years ago, at this point, we're not gonna go back, so.
When that, um, line was made up, that was back when I was, and what was happening was, we'd go and say, we'd say, take Hurricane Irene.
Yeah.
That's kind of when we did this, because of that. And the road commissioner was spending all their money on storm damage that we, they weren't planning on spending their money on. So, um, and when I was talking to a select board member at the time, she says, you know, well, where's all this FEMA money go? She goes, and goes, in the designated fund. She goes, well, no wonder our designated funds get so big, because they were taking the money there and robbing us rear.
Reimbursed.
So what I, what I suggested was that any money that come in from FEMA would go back to the department to replenish the accounts. Well, that's not happening. So, but we haven't had any natural disasters lately, we got all this money in there, so at this point, what we should do is put the money back in the designated fund. Because it, and what we should be doing at selectman is just reallocating the money.
That's right.
From the undesigned.
How much is in that account?
I believe it was between thirty, forty, thirty-six thousand.
Good.
Yeah.
So, we'll write a warrant article to, um, liquidate that reserve fund.
Transfer the balance.
Move the balance.
Right now, can't use it anyways, because even for us to use that, we would have to have a special town meeting to okay it.
It, it, it looks like it's restricted money, it's not.
It is.
It, it's not restricted.
Yeah.
Because we fulfilled the purpose by doing the work, and this is their reimbursement to us of that work. So it's, so it's not really restricted, because, because we've, we've fulfilled the purpose the money was given for. So it's no longer restricted.
It's a reserve fund, yeah.
No, it's.
You got a good point.
It's fungible.
It, it, we've, the government gave it to us for a particular purpose, we did it, the money is unrestricted money to the town.
All right.
Yeah, not really.
On the next page, um, the conversation came up about the ambulance reserve fund and the fire department capital vehicle fund. Understanding the difference, recommendation is that there's a warrant article written to combine those and rename it to a fire department cap, whatever you guys decide, maybe you call it a fire department capital, or fire department capital vehicle, capital fund. But it was, I'm trying to understand the difference between the two and why not just.
Can you read off the articles that they got there now?
Ambulance reserve fund, capital improvement fund, dam's capital improvement fund, fire department capital vehicle fund, recreational capital improvement fund, and ARPA fund.
So, when I heard those, when I was sitting here with Mark, none of that made sense, that we have the same fund funding itself. You've got two vehicle funds, right? Well, three of them, I think. Think there's three vehicle funds in there. My suggestion is a fire department capital, um, fund. They could be for their fire truck, their ambulance, whatever. And what it does is it, it confines that, and, and I actually, I actually think it gives them a little bit more leeway, so if they have a need, they can use that money. But tying it up in four different reserves, it doesn't make any sense to me.
What authority do we have to get in order for them to use it? Does it need to go to town meeting?
Yes, because the way this is written, it carries forward, but doesn't.
I mean, the whole thing is, is.
He's trying to minimize how many towns.
Capital reserve accounts should be backed up with a capital plan. That you're putting money aside over time for a particular purpose, and that's what a reserve should be for. To just have a reserve sitting out there for these amounts of money, and you still gotta go back to the town to ask them for it? You know, to me, they're undesigned reserves, and I would just close them out. I, it, it, because if you need them, you're gonna just appropriate the money out of undesigned reserves. And who says the money is needed in that account versus, for that purpose versus some other purpose? I mean.
Well, I mean, you're right, because really all we're doing is hijacking the money.
It, we're just squirreling money away in these little reserve accounts.
I've always said with, like, the ambulance fund, okay, what, what do you think we got in the ambulance fund?
Like, five, seven thousand dollars?
Okay. Uh, ambulance is what, Robin, three hundred?
Uh, now, far be close to a half million.
Say, say half a million dollars. So, so at the end of the day, five thousand dollars.
I, I'd rather say, we need any ambulance, we need it in seven years. Let's put money aside each and every year, so that when we want to do it, we've got one. Not have something that's really not gonna do anything. It's not, it's not even gonna be a down payment.
So we, so we have an ambulance line there too?
Ambulance reserve and a fire department capital vehicle.
Okay. The capital vehicle, uh, we, we'll probably get rid of that one, because we're not moving that forward.
So we'll write an article to combine them, does, we'll create a new one, dissolve the current ones, and move all the money into that one account? Just figure out what you want to call.
If, if.
Or not at all.
I, I, I've, I describe what I think ought to happen in the future. I think we need a capital budget for the town, and I think we need a capital budget for roads, for the fire department, for transfer station, whatever. And I think when we get that, we'll be able to figure out how much money we need to be putting aside to meet our long-term capital needs. And when we do that, we'll reorganize all of these reserve accounts, we'll flush them all out, and we'll figure out how much money needs to be put in these reserve accounts over time. So for right now, we'd leave them where they are, but I would hope that we would develop a capital plan for the town.
The one doesn't even have money in it, does it?
The balances on these.
I mean, the, uh, the truck one.
The fire department capital vehicle?
Yeah, there's no money in that account.
Do you have the audit, do you know how much was in that?
Yeah, I got it here.
I don't believe we've ever moved money ahead for that.
No, no, these, these things have been static for years.
And that's why Mark made the recommendation today, that somebody's.
He's, he's absolutely right.
I just, when I read them, they all sounded like they were doing the same purpose.
We've got a lot of different ones.
I don't want the money to disappear out of those counts, but.
So I would just continue what we're doing, and if we can develop a capital plan going forward, it will take care of itself. Joyce?
Yeah, going back to capital plan, I think you need a capital, um, improvement committee back again. Because right now, uh, from what we gave you last year, you're gonna need a, an engine in three years. And if an ambulance is gonna cost you between four and five hundred thousand, an engine is gonna cost you close to a million dollars. And they need, they, they say, five years, they need that. So, you know, we start putting money aside, that's one thing, which is the way we should do it, but how do we get there? Is, you guys have to figure that out.
That's right.
You have to figure it out, but if we just put, um, I, I don't, I don't know, whatever the amount is Tom's looking for, say there's thirty thousand dollars in those accounts, and you put it all in one account, where's it gonna go first, and is it gonna empty the account?
I'm, I'm not saying I want account at all. Uh, I mean, we can decide whether we want one account, or we want multiple accounts.
Right.
Personally, I would do one, because when you do a capital plan, you're trying to judge when you might need something.
Oh, yeah, we did that, we know.
You may be wrong, and you need something sooner.
Right.
So if you have it in one account, and if you're funding it at the right level, whatever the real need is, is what comes to the top.
Right.
And if that's different than the plan, you don't worry about it.
Right.
There'll be, there'll be the second people.
That's kind of why I was saying, if we put that, put that in one account, it may, might, make the access easier.
I think it would.
For, say, we need, um, a fire truck sooner than we think. Now, I don't, and I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit, Joyce, because I don't think we need the capital improvement to tell us we need a new fire truck. I think we need the department head, fire chief to come to us and say, we need a new fire truck in five years.
That's right. Yeah, and, and we'll figure out how to, that's our job to figure out what to.
Then we start figuring out where the money, I mean, we, that's his job to tell us that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yes, you can do that, but I will say this, for the people who were on capital improvement, every bit of information we got, we got from department heads, each one told us what.
Yeah.
We had liaisons.
And we have that information, and I think that's a great, that's a great starting point that, you know, needs to be.
But just for those people who did all that work, they went to the department heads, nobody just said, oop.
No, no, no.
But on the, and I, and I appreciate that, that's great.
I understand.
So, but when you, when a, a committee goes to a department and says, what do you need? Now, I'll tell you, okay, we need this, this, and that. Okay, that's, that's great, because you, you, you went to them. They should be coming to us with their plan. That, that department head, Robin, fire station, everybody that has wants and needs, that I know, everybody knows we're gonna need a new ambulance someday.
Right.
And everybody knows we're gonna need another fire truck, because we always do.
Right.
Okay? I would be, I would think the department head would be proactive and come to us now and say, okay, in five years, we better start saving money.
I understand exactly what you're saying. Um, I think, we don't need to talk about it.
I think we all agree. I think we all agree, Joyce.
We, we agree.
We agree, we all agree.
Thank you.
All right.
Where are we?
So we're just gonna leave those as is for now, okay?
Um, next thing he asked to point out to you was that, uh, he believes that Acton may be one of the few towns that lists out the rates for the road commissioner. And he says most towns, and, and remember, I'm presenting this, because you asked me to meet with him. Say, to allow the board of selectmen to negotiate the rates, or state rates or something. I'm just telling you, that was a recommendation.
I, that's clean right there, because then we don't have to worry about someone getting more money than the other guy, and this and that, it's already black and white.
Yeah. I'll, I'll be honest with you, given, given the concerns people can have about all of that, I, I love having it approved, and it's, it's very transparent, which is a good thing. Okay.
What do you think, Dan?
No, I agree. I said, I think it's very transparent, I think that's what people like, mostly, that's what. This whole process is done, it's trying to make everything as transparent as possible.
What they're paying for.
Yeah.
All right, so, if you want all those changes made to the warrant, so the idea is that the, um, warrant and finance, when is your next meeting? Looking at my handy day in the calendar.
Meeting is, uh, Tuesday, the twentieth.
So you're looking to start making actual recommendations on those on the twentieth?
Yep. So if, if you have, if the warrant is, is given to us on Tuesday, we'll start. Because we're, we're due to have them done, um, the next day.
Great. And are you all set with the?
The schedule we were given was, um, to have our recommendations to the select board on the twenty-first.
So we'll have it to you by Friday, but do you, I mean, do we need to sneak in a meeting on the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, just to have on the books, or? I mean, we could give you one more week if you need it. I mean, we don't, that's a lot of articles in one night, it's up to you.
I mean, it's, I mean, that was one of the reasons we went through the, um, the warrant, the draft warrant that you gave us, was to develop any questions that we might have, so I think that, for the most part, we are in good shape.
Are you all set with numbers at this stage?
With the, the number, you know, I mean, we've been dealing with the, about the same numbers, the, um, the whole time, so.
Yeah, I guess that's my point. Is, is there further deliberation by the warrant finance committee needed on the numbers, or have you pretty much concluded that?
I think we're pretty much done. Do you guys agree with that?
Not on the school side.
What's that?
Not on the school side.
Well, no.
Oh, no, we're, we're talking about the municipal, not the school.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, municipal budget. School's another matter.
Well, I'm sorry? They're, they're gonna have, give them to us, uh, next, by next week.
So you are, you still need some numbers, huh?
Well, we had asked for the, um.
Fund balance accounts, the reserve accounts.
Yeah. And, and that basically, I mean, there, there's no discussion on that, that's just.
You just want it, yeah.
Information, yes.
So, good, we're, we're moving along. This is great.
So, I mean, it's, we, we know, we did commit to having, you know, to trying to, to get it to you by the twenty-first, so.
Thank you. Thanks to the committee.
That means next Tuesday, you guys will be voting on it.
Next Tuesday, we'll, we'll be voting next Tuesday, and, um, I will let Jennifer know Wednesday morning what the results were, and, um.
That's great.
And that's that.
Good, awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for all your efforts on that, by the way. I think, you know, we all went out of our way trying to streamline and move things forward this year, and, uh, I, I, I think we're all pretty pleased with the, with the results, so thanks for your participation in that.
Yeah, great.
Thank, um, Leslie, for her leadership this year.
There you go.
She's done a good job getting us the information we asked for.
There you go.
I think as a board, and we don't have Ed here tonight, but I'll tell you, with him here, um, that we've been trying to be as transparent and working with you guys as much as we can, and, um, so far, so good. I, I was a little reluctant at first when we talked about breaking up the liaisons and working with the department heads, but I think it worked out pretty well.
Yeah.
So.
At the end of my meeting on, um, Monday, I did, um, talk to the rest of the committee, and I told them that I would want some feedback from them as far as how, you know, with the process changing, what they felt worked, what they felt didn't work, what things that we might be able to do next year, um, to, to improve the process.
If those are internal to the committee, I think that's great, you're doing that. If you think there are items that you ought to share with the select board, I would encourage you to do that.
Oh, I mean, that's, I wanna come back and let you.
Come and, you know, I, I would love to hear it. If you've got some thoughts, let's hear about them, and, and let's make sure we, we can try to address those next year.
Well, yeah, the, the idea was to get their thoughts, and then to come to you guys, and like, and, and then have that discussion as to, you know, how we can better improve.
Yeah.
The process, I mean, because we can always make improvements.
That's right, wonderful.
So.
Okay.
Okay, where are we at?
Town report.
Oh, it was back to the agenda. Okay, I thought we still had a bunch of stuff. Okay, we're at the town report. Uh, where are the, how is my paperwork here? Oh, Dan.
Um, so I went over and, um, made a few edits, just adjustments, grammatical, things like that in the town report. So I just wanted to make a recommendation that we.
Make a motion?
To move to accept it as edited.
I'm sorry, can we hold off on the conversations?
Charlie.
Charlie? I'm sorry, it's just the background noise. I don't think people can necessarily hear the motions.
So we're gonna have Dan start over.
So I, um, went over the town report and went through for edits, grammatical edits like that. Um, I finished, and so I moved that week's, um, accept the town report as edited.
So you made a motion?
Second.
On the paper? Okay, thank you. Thanks a lot for doing that, Dan.
So this should go to the printer?
How many changes he makes will.
Yeah, but once we get through that process, it will go to the printer and, you know, and.
It's very little changes, but we figured we'd, um, make the motion to have it done that way there, next week, we can ship it, so we don't have to wait till Wednesday.
What's the printer typically take, a week, ten days, or?
Yeah, they're pretty quick.
Pretty good, so, it'll be out soon. All right?
Okay, so where are we here? Uh, town report, okay, new business, appointments. Okay, we've got. Let's see, Linda Lek. I'll, I'll actually make these appointments, okay? Uh, so today I met with, um, Ann McHeckeren. Uh, she wants to join the, um, Mary Grant. And it was, it was, it was a good time, and, uh, I'm pretty excited about it. And, uh, we got Linda Lek. Uh, she was on the committee, she had, uh, take some time off, but she would like to be back on. So I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Ann McHeckeren, McCracken, Grecken, and Linda, Linda Lek to the Mary Grant Committee. So, um, six thirty, two thousand twenty-five, for both of them.
I second.
All in favor? Okay, awesome, appreciate. We just filled up the committee up. Oh, I gotta sign it, sorry about that.
Go over sign it, or?
We all do, yeah. Sorry about that. There you go, Dan. Sarah?
Who's this for? Who's this for?
That's for...
Oh.
Is there a second one coming?
What's that?
Is there a second appointment coming?
Oh, there is.
Sure. We received a resignation. I'd like to read. Please accept this letter as my formal resignation from my position as deputy clerk in the town of Acton effective February 23rd, 2024. I have accepted a position with another municipality. The consideration of this move was solely monetary. I appreciate the opportunity for growth and development you have provided during my tenure. Thank you for all of your guidance and support. Please, you know, if I can be of assistance during the transition period, I wish you and the town of Acton the very best going forward. Kayla Perkins. So Kayla has been with us a short time, but had done a great job. I know I certainly enjoyed working with her. I think she was a very nice, very nice person at the window. I think everyone enjoyed that. But she got a great opportunity, and God love her. Good for her. That's what it's all about in life.
Make a motion to accept it?
Make a motion to accept that resignation.
Second. All in favor? Okay. Here you go, resignation abatements.
Three abatements that O'Donnell has put forward. First one is on Tax Map 145, Lot 19. He is lowering the valuation by $280,000 because he says the land value was adjusted to reflect development limitations. But the exact same words are used on Tax Map 152, Lot 29. You'll see these were dated a few weeks back. They were in the first round of abatements. And originally, the statement said that the land value was decreased because they were unbuildable. And Jason and I weren't comfortable with that, that we were assessing properties on that determination. We went back to Dennis, had some meetings with him. He reevaluated them. And says that currently, they have limitations of how they can be developed, so...
But they can't be developed.
So our assessor agreed with this, our appraisal, our appraisal company?
If they could be developed, right, we didn't like the fact that he was, that we were labeling them unbuildable. Because if they did certain things, whether it's the zoning board and that, you know, or moving gravel, they could possibly be. So he's adjusted them, but he still recommends how the property sits today, they are limited. So those are two. The next one is for the old Acton airfield. He has lowered this one $195,000 in valuation. The land was adjusted to reflect the remainder, remaining gravel pit area. He says that he's met with the owner several times. They've actually combined some lots. And for the amount of gravel pit that's actually left out there, O'Donnell felt like it was over assessed.
That's a first. I didn't realize he assessed the value of the gravel.
Well, if it's a working pit, wouldn't that be the basis for the appraisal?
Yeah, but, I mean, I don't know.
I mean, if he were to sell it, my guess is the value is influenced by the amount of...
But how many hogbacks are around the, you know what hogback is, right?
Yeah.
Because gravel around the town of Acton, is there some value in the gravel?
Well, but they aren't permitted as...
Well, no, but the value of that gravel is still the same.
Yeah.
But I'm good with it.
I assume he's following his standards for, I mean, this is what he does.
I'll make a motion, we accept the abatements, approve the abatements for map lot 229-020, 145-019, and map lot number 152-029.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, there you go, Sarah. You don't sign up right, Tom, yeah?
Yeah, I'm all signed.
Old Fire Station Equipment Bid.
So we've been out to bid for about three weeks now on the equipment that's in there. We've given lots of tours during the day, and we received zero bids.
Okay. There you go. We've done our due diligence, so...
Demo it. We're going to demo it with everything in it.
Okay.
I mean, that's what we did.
Okay, Grayson's Legacy Request.
Yeah. I'm just going to read you the email off my phone. The printed copy seems to have grown lives.
Is it right here?
Okay, go ahead.
I got three or four of them here.
Oh, really? That would be my fault.
Want me to read it, or?
I've got them all.
You want me to read it? Sure. I didn't want to read it. Okay, I'm writing to inquire about using the town hall. This is from Grayson Legacy Nonprofit, and it's signed by Crystal Andrews. I'm writing to inquire about using the town hall for a free community event we would like to host. There would be no charge for this, and we aren't collecting any money from it. We are hoping to start with a basic first aid class and offer kids yoga and more free events in the future. We are hoping to possibly have the fee waived for using the meeting space as we are a nonprofit organization based out of Acton. I've also attached a letter from Chapley Memorial School, which highlights a little bit of what we do and how we help the community and surrounding communities as well. Thank you for your consideration. And, yes, okay. And that was been signed by Crystal Andrews. So she's looking for, the foundation is looking to have access to town hall with no charge?
Correct.
My only questions, I would say, if we were to consider this, I just want verification of the nonprofit status. I do have a little bit of concern. They do give like a wide array of the type of events. If we're to consider this, I would like a list of the events, just because liability and what might be taking place. If there's like one thing we could approve, but, she says first aid and then yoga, and I don't know other future events, but...
We've had yoga and stuff down here before, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. This isn't a town event. We charge, we charge for birthday parties, all that stuff too, right?
I'm sorry?
We charge for birthday parties and other events, everything that comes in here. I think at the end of the day...
The only reason we waive is the Lions Club, because they give back to neighbors helping neighbors into the fuel.
Yeah, so I think...
Is it fair to say what they give back is more than what the fee would be?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, good. That's what I would hope.
Seeing it's not a town event, it's private, I think we just stay rolling the way we're rolling. You know, charge like we would charge if anybody else is using the town hall. This isn't a town event.
And it's probably time, and not because this came up, but in general, to have the, in a couple of years, we're trying to make sure that the attorney has reviewed the liability. You know, it's a difference, like the rec is using it for tumbling, you know. We just want to make sure that if outside agencies or organizations are using it, where the liability falls.
Well, we definitely, you know, if they're doing yoga, and I don't know, I've seen that stuff on TV, but it looks like someone could get hurt.
When we did yoga, we did it through the rec, so the rec was covered, they were covered under the covers that signed. So that's why I'm only concerned...
They can't do it through the rec, though.
Well, no, I know, I'm just saying that we knew the insurance was covered with previous yoga because it might have been through, or the library, and the library has, you know, has that insurance.
If we agreed to this, would this make it inconsistent with how we treat everyone else?
If you...
If we agreed to waive the fee, is that consistent or inconsistent with all other sort of nonprofits and organizations?
We don't get a lot of requests. The only people that we waive it for now are road associations often meet here, but because they're town road associations trying to maintain the road, we waive that.
This is just...
I like being straightforward, consistent, and not making exceptions. And, because once you start making exceptions, then, you know, people are going to naturally question, well, if for them, why not me?
Well, I mean, I don't know, it doesn't sound like it's too much of an exception,
because it sounds like there's at least two instances where we do waive the fee. So if there was no instances, I'd say then this would be, could be considered an exception if we were to waive it, but we just listed two instances where...
Now, one of them, we said they donated back more than the fee. So it's, you know, the town is benefiting from the activity.
It's still a waiver in terms of that because of the nonprofit, yeah, that fee is taken to consideration, but then you add...
Having spent my life in nonprofits and seen how nonprofits can operate, personally, I think we have an obligation to understand more about the nonprofit. Nothing about this particular one, but in general. Because not all nonprofits are nonprofit. And, you know, they, there are, they can operate in different ways. And I don't know anything about this organization. I would say this about any of them. I would want to know more about them. I'd want to know, quite frankly, I want to see a financial statement. They got to, they got to file tax returns. I'd love to see a tax return. I don't want to get into all that. So I just want to stay out of it and just say, look, it's a nonprofit. How much is the fee? 50 bucks? You know, I don't think that's onerous for anyone. Who cleans the room afterwards?
Well, so they leave a $50 deposit and they pay $50. If they leave the room the way that they found it, they get the $50 back. If we have to clean it, we keep it.
Why don't we just continue doing that? That's all I feel, I mean...
I'm not inclined to make, to make the exception.
So...
Does anyone want to make a motion to approve this? I guess that's the question.
I'm fine keeping as those.
Okay, there you go. I think we're done.
Old Fire Station Demolition Selection.
Great. Well, I was not here when the bids were opened, but I was part of the conversation subsequent. And bids were opened, what, about three weeks ago or so? Yeah. And as you may recall, there was a low bidder who came in at 12,005,000. This is to demolish the old fire station. And that was Norman Enterprises LLC. The second, next bidder was Gardner Concrete, 17,500. So I wanted to talk to the low bidder and get a sense of who they were. And what's, I think particularly a concern is that that's right next to the library. And we want to make sure this thing is done, you know, in a way that doesn't create any issues to town property. So I spoke to Brian from Norman Enterprise. I understand he's from Acton?
Yeah.
Chapley. He runs a very respectable business, a dumpster rental business, and has been transitioning into doing demolitions and trying to move into that line of business. I asked him point blank if he had done anything like this of this size, and he said, no, he hasn't. Which was an obvious concern, at least for me anyways. So he's never done a project of this size, and there was also some concern about the time it would take. He broke it up into three chunks, but basically he's saying seven to 10 days to do the project, where the other bidders came in at a day and a half. And so if we're going to be here 10 days, then, you know, a day and a half is sort of one, sort of risk factor. If you're here 10 days and you've got the site partially torn down and so on, it just seems to me it presents a liability the longer we go on there. And we might have to take, they might have to take some special efforts to secure the site, to make sure no one wanders in there and creates any issue. And third, I think there was some concern about the equipment that he might be using, whether it was big enough and there was enough of it to make sure that when it was done, it was done safely. But I think the principal issues are his experience with jobs like this, of this size, and the time factor. So I just wanted to report that out tonight. I think we'd like to try to take action on this and move it forward. So the next bidder was, I did not talk to them, but I understand they've got quite an extensive track record. David, maybe you know something, maybe you talked to them?
Yeah, so I talked to Gardner Concrete, you know, they're from up north. And my concern was somebody from Bangor driving all the way down here to tear down a little building, you know. But I guess come to find out, this is what they do. They travel all over the state of Maine. And he, the individual I talked to said that they were going to be coming in with, they would come in with a 100-yard live bottom trailer. They haul all this stuff to Hartman, Maine, to a landfill up there. This is a job that they would expect to be done in a day and a half. And, of course, this is what he does, demolition, so. So I have to talk to him. I was pretty confident. This individual knew what he was doing, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely be concerned having somebody who doesn't have too much experience. I know this is a project people in town have really wanted to see get done. So I want to make sure that we do it as effectively and thoroughly as possible, make sure it gets done right. Like you said, the closest to the library, we want to make sure, like, that's something that we take pride in this town is the historical aesthetics of our town offices and buildings, so...
And the thing is too, is the longer we have the building out there demoed and not, you know, because it's not going to take long getting it on the ground, but it's whether or not how long the mess is going to be there. And the shorter period of time, the better, just for liability and everything else, so...
I think I was very careful in how I described my conversation with Brian, Brian Norman. I just want to reiterate that he is a very respectable businessman in this area, has done a wonderful job. It's just, I think, for our immediate needs, what we're looking for, it's just not the best fit from my perspective. But nothing negative to say about this individual. He's a, I've heard great things about him, so, you know, maybe he'll be back in the future. But with that, I'd like to make a motion that we let a contract to Gardner Concrete in the amount of $17,500 to raise the old fire station. Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
David, we did inadvertently leave Arnold Murray's correspondent off the agenda.
Which one, Ruth?
We got the email about the franchise fees.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you want to table until next week?
Well, well, we can, I'm sure he's watching, that we'll look into it. We're going to, we're going to look into it and see exactly what those franchise fees are there for. And, yeah.
If it works out the way he describes, I think, personally, I'm glad he raised the issue. It's something we can consider, so, thank you, Annie, for doing that.
Yeah, I mean, I pay that fee and I'm here.
Yeah, I do too, and we never, the whole notion is we may be paying a fee that few people are...
But I want to, I want to make sure, though, before we decide we're going to discontinue taking any money, that they're not paying us for other services, so. So we will be looking at Mr. Murray. And I guess we're down to public comment. Anybody got, any comment? No? Okay.
Right on time.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we adjourn. Second.
All in favor? Go ahead, everybody.